I want to say at 9:00 AM. It is February the 26th. I'd like to call the Delver County Council Meeting to order. And we'll start by standing and saying we pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Roll call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
President.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Ms. Quakebush.
Here.
As the agenda been properly posted?
Yes.
I approve the agenda as posted. All those say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the January 22nd meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jessica. I didn't get the...
Jane.
Jane, second by Jane. Roll call please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Wait. We'll move right along to the financial and transfer agenda. We'll start with transfers first, please.
Okay.
Ms. Patterson.
Circuit Court, 191, adult probation officer, minus $18,840. A-191, adult probation officer, plus $18,840. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Jessica.
Second.
Moved by Larry. Before I call the rule on this, I'll point out that all of the transfers were given a recommendation by the Finance Committee. Roll call.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Emergency medical service. Okay. This is D-109, but I haven't changed. The total is now minus $34,624.41 to E-109, plus $34,624.41.
Move for approval with Jane.
Second.
Larry made the motion. Jessica, any questions from the council? Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Sheriff Department, A-135, minus $3,034. C-146, plus $3,034. B-110, minus $3,034. B-135, plus $3,034. A-135, minus $40,507.06. B-135, plus $40,507.06. B-110, minus $37,541.90. C-110, plus $37,541.90. B-114, minus $2,835. C-110, plus $2,835. I have a change on B-114 should now read minus $36,571.84. C-114 will be plus $36,571.84. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Jessica.
Second.
Second by Scott.
Just for everybody's information, the smaller amounts are is the longevity there. Breaking that down separately and probably it's a little easier to understand that way.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Adult user fees, 191, adult probation officer, minus $8,910.63. A-191, adult probation officer, plus $8,090.63.
Motion to approve.
Jessica, second. Second by Larry. Comments from the council? Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any corrections? 120, minus $15,630. A-120, plus $15,630. 128, minus $15,060. A-128, plus $15,060. Total request zero.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second by Jessica. Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes. Those of you in the audience that haven't been here before, what we just did was make transfers within salary funds where people have left and they've been replaced and the council approves the new line items for the new hire because there are variations in different salaries that have what we call longevity locked into their salary. In some cases, some of that moves with them and transferred to another position. So those are all just procedural.
Okay, we have an addendum transfer also. Clerk, 113, minus $29,664. A-113, plus $29,664. B-115, minus $28,275.40. C-115, plus $28,275.40. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second. Jessica, second by Larry. Got ahead of us up there, didn't they?
Yep.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
The jail, I'm gonna read these together because they actually go together. First one is B-134 is minus $30,233.40. C-134, plus $30,233.40. Then this person quit already, so we're doing the transfer again from C-134 to the new, a dollar amount is minus $28,864.04 into D-134 with a plus of $28,864.04.
Move for approval. Ms. Chambers.
Say that again on the numbers there.
Twenty-eight thousand eight sixty-four oh four.
Moved by Larry.
One second, Larry.
Second by Jessica. Any comments, questions? Turn over and the correctional officers is pretty handy. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Financial agenda, Delver County Sheriff, that's been withdrawn. Log in there, 332, post each cost for tax sales, $35,303. Total request, $35,303.
Motion approved.
Second. Jessica. Any questions? This all comes back to the general fund after the tax sale is held, the cost is put into the redemption process. Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Assessor sales disclosure to 18th Schools Conference, $1,550. Total request, $1,550.
Motion to approve.
Jessica.
Second.
Second by Scott. Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Thank you. EMS capital improvement, 442 power cut, oh wait, missed one. 441, mobile tables, $8,634.38. 442 power cut, $15,625.60. 443, life pack, 15 heart monitor, $34,993.81. 445, Lucas chest compression system, $29,787.80. Total request, $89,41.50.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Larry.
Jason, would you come up and tell us the story that you're missing finance familiar? I think the council would be nice to hear that one again. As long as you do it the same way, we're not interested.
I assume we're referring to the Lucas 2 device?
Yeah.
The Lucas 3 devices?
Yeah.
So what we're doing is replacing some equipment that is at the end of life. And the discussion that we had in Finance Committee was this Lucas 3 device that we're actually adding two to the fleet. The first one we purchased was on a grant from Firehouse Subs and we put one in the paramedic supervisor truck. We have had, in my career, and I've been around here taking 911 calls since the late eighties, I've seen more people or seen the statistics of more people save with the use of this chest compression machine during cardiac arrest. I was talking to the crews the other day and there was another one that I was not aware of, but essentially what this machine does is absolutely 100% perfect CPR. It's uninterrupted. It's basically a chest compression machine. It comes in the size of something like a large backpack. And the last save that I have details on came from an individual that was awake when the ambulance crew got there, went into cardiac arrest, in front of them, they put the Lucas 2 device on, they had mechanical disassociation, which means that the electricity in the heart was working, but it wasn't pumping. And so when they turned the machine on and they had a response to the actual mechanical pumping of the chest, this person woke up. So as long as the machine was on, the person was awake and they were sedated, but it works so well that I'm hearing more and more stories of this actually working. When I started and anybody in healthcare remembers, you know, you used to go back to, you just did chest compressions, it wasn't 100% perfect, you'd get tired, you had fatigue. This machine doesn't have that. And we've seen the success stories over and over again. So we're starting to outfit the fleet with these. They're about $15,000 apiece. They have a life span of about five to eight years. And then obviously CPR changes all the time with HA regulations, but it's an amazing piece of equipment. It's probably, since the cardiac monitor and the ability that we have to do with 12 leads in the field, along with, gosh, color metrics and the pulse oximetry and all that, it's probably the number one device I've seen that's changed EMS in pre-hospital. So we wanna get these out into the community even more than just the one that we have.
Will this kind of fit you guys with basically any of the trucks that were running during your shift or will it?
So we have one that's stationed in downtown Muncie all the time. So what we hope to do is put one east and one west. And so there's three right across the center of the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Since we have a really nice diversified audience here today, I would like you to relate to them how many dollars the commissioners wrote off on ambulance calls last week.
We have the last two years written off more than $5 million.
Last one was a little over $400,000, correct? Last week.
The 2018 write-offs were $5,350,94.68.
Thank you. I just thought that was good information for the general public. Okay. We need a roll call here.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakebush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ambulance replacement.
Back up.
No?
Said he backed up.
441, ambulance rechassis, $163,025. Total request, $163,025.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Jessica.
Second.
Second by Jane.
Would you kind of recap a little bit? I know I've had a couple conversations with...
This particular truck is a Braun ambulance. It is one that we have taken in on trade from Albany Emergency Medical Service. We are helping them out with staffing currently and this is one of the things that we benefit from that. This will also change our fleet to 100% Braun ambulance fleet. The benefit to that is these are rechassisable, meaning about every five to 10 years, depending on the chassis model, we take the box off. It's a welded aluminum and steel box, which many ambulances that you can buy for lesser amounts that are new are made out of plywood. And we really don't like that. We see the value and the safety of these trucks, plus they last so much longer. The truck that we're going to take out of service has been rechastised, it's at its end of life. It is one of those plywood boxes. It was manufactured in 1988. So we'll go to 100% Braun fleet. Like I said, we've had phenomenal experiences with the company and getting this done will take us, put us essentially a brand-new ambulance back into the fleet and go into our rotation of rechassis with the Braun units.
This is the one that you brought to us a couple of months back?
Yeah, so...
So you could get in line?
So the Braun right now has a production of over, it was about 300 days when we came to you, so we had to sign on on this project in early December, I think it was November, December. And I had approached President Quakebush about this and said, hey, if we can get signed on in this, we can get into their manufacturing program sometime in April. They actually got us in a little bit early because of the truck that was ahead of ours fell through, so we actually, the truck actually went to the manufacturer and is awaiting to be in line next to get rechastised. It'll get repainted, rebranded, and have all of the equipment on it updated to the new standards. So with that, I won't know the actual final number. What I asked Braun to do is give me, you know, your best guess estimate before you have the truck in your hands, what this is going to cost, using the formula that we used for our last truck that we had rechassis. I anticipate, we left about $6,000 in the ambulance replacement fund because I think that's probably the give and take of where we may be. So I really do anticipate coming back before either next month or the month after to finish the project. But we know that we're going to be in that ballpark range with the 160.
Thank you, sir. Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakebush.
Yes.
Adult user fees, 395, drug screen, $4,500. 441 office machines, lap bits for laptops, $8,500. Total request, $13,000.
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, second by Jessica.
We asked for some explanation, I guess, on why this was, the cost was what it was.
Yeah, Emily Anderson, Court Administrator, and I have Ken Mace here, who's Chief Probation Officer. So after speaking with Ken about the laptop replacement, he had already replaced, or already purchased a couple laptops to get the pre-trial probation officer started with those risk assessments up at the jail. So that money already came out, so he's replacing that money and then he's gonna purchase five more. And that's where he's got the figure. And he said he's got the quotes from Jim Pluke for the laptops.
The two laptops that we previously purchased, the laptops are $1,189 apiece, then the software is $263. So those laptops come out to about $1,453 apiece. And purchasing five of those, so it'll be one in each court, since everything we do now is filed electronically, that'll give probation officers the ability to access their files in court.
Thank you. Emily.
Any other questions?
Anybody else? Roll call please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Juvenile court family recovery, 101, that should not say part-time, it should say program coordinator. Eighteen...
Halftime.
Huh?
It's halftime.
Yeah.
It's halftime.
Program coordinator.
Halftime program coordinator.
$18,335. $171 FICA, $1,405. $172 PERF, $2,055. Total request, $21,795.
Motion to approve.
Jessica.
Second.
Second by Scott. Do you want to explain what the halftime is?
Sure. Last month, I talked to you guys shortly at the end of the meeting about this position. This is that position out at juvenile court where they are starting a family recovery court. It's along the same lines as your problem-solving courts here at the adult court, which is like drug court and veterans court. And what this court will do is help the families of the children that are involved in the system. So we have our court reporter right now that is taking care of this position, putting all the work into it. They had requested part of their grant money is to fund the position, but we couldn't find anybody for that. But we have to still proceed with getting the program off the ground. So they thought, why don't we give her half program coordinator, half court reporter? We already have somebody from juvenile probation who's doing half court reporter, assistant court reporter, half juvenile probation secretary, so that's covered. And then give her half program coordinator salary and then half of the court reporter salary. It actually saves the county about $14,000 this year. And then it is under the understanding that once this grant money runs out, of course they're reapplying, so as long as the grant money's there, we'll do this. As soon as that grant money is out, she'll go back to court reporter salary. And then we're hoping we'll have some kind of other funding in place by the time that happens, so we can fund it totally for her, to give her program coordinator.
Anyone else? Roll call please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Operation Pullover, 101 DUI grant, that's for salaries, $40,000. Total request, $40,000.
Motion approved.
Second.
By Larry, second by Jessica. I think we all know pretty much what that is. Anyone have a question? Roll call please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Eligible homestead, 106A head bookkeeper, $1,604. $171 FICA, $556. $172 PERF, $814. Total request, $2,974.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved by Jane, second by Jessica. Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Tax sale administration, that should say 310 tax sale administration, $120,645. Total request, $120,645.
Motion approved.
Second.
By Larry, second by Jessica. Questions? This is contractual fee, is that correct?
Yes, these are fees that we...
Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes. Who wants to make a motion? Famous motion.
I'll make a motion to approve transfers and amend the salary ordinance of life re-...
Second.
By Larry, second by Jessica. Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes. For the audience's information, what we just did was we approved new appropriations from special funds, money's already set aside that will fulfill the obligation and there was no money appropriated from the general fund this morning. Next thing on the agenda is tax abatements. I think, okay, I'm sat in this week, so he will be here, I think, six months, is that right, Scott?
I think that was bad.
Yep. Then we have Samantha Taylor, are you here?
Hi.
Could you step forward? Samantha Taylor is our appointment of Yorktown Library Board of Directors and she sent us a letter asking to be reappointed. And she has served for a period of time and the audience asked her to come and was to be introduced. So would you like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. My name's Samantha Taylor and I am a teacher. I work for Hazelwood Christian Preschool. I've taught for 13 years. This is my fourth year on the library board. This is my third year as president of the library board. And we are currently in the process of adding on to our library. We just accepted bids for a $1.4 million project, so we're really excited about that.
Just does a bit of a history of Howard Schroeder and Don Mollin owned a drugstore in Yorktown and they donated it...
Yes.
...to the community. And Virginia Mercer was the lead on the group that started this. And I just happened to be on the tax adjustment board when the first budget was approved, so...
We're really excited. The library is...
Come a long way.
I'm sorry?
So you've come a long way.
Yes, we have. So we have a huge kids programs and there's a big teen scene that comes after school. And so they fill, 30 to 40 kids usually come in after school every day. And so we really are excited about adding to the space and giving them a special place of their own to have after school, as well as letting the adults have a separate area to not enjoy time with the teens.
Well, and we all appreciate your coming up today and we appreciate your serving. It's difficult for us to go around to all these boards and I guess that's why they've been set up so that we make appointments, but I'm glad you came up. I thank you very much.
Thank you for appointing me. I appreciate it.
And we will do that appointment. Do I hear a motion to reappoint Samantha Taylor to the Yorktown Public Library? Elude.
Second.
Okay, all those, roll call please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakebush.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam here, do you have anything personnel? No? Okay. I don't know whether the B-12 shots soaked in yet. Had my first B-12 shot. She'd tell me how great I'd feel, but I'm a fella, yeah.
Is that where you, now you have to continue those for forever?
I don't know. My wife's been after me to do that. Every time I get the note on the email, I miss it. This time I had another meeting in the county building at the same time, so I got a B-12 shot. shot. Thank you for letting me know. Okay, now, Mr. Hughes, we've got the three documents here to work on, and I'd like for you to explain it for us.
All three of these ordinances were introduced at the January meeting. The first two ordinances deal with a funding mechanism for the jail project. They are offered to the council in the alternative. The first ordinance listed on the agenda, 004, is a funding mechanism without a property tax backup. The second ordinance, 005, includes a property tax backup. And this affects to, it does not affect the interest rate, as was explained last month, it does affect the length of the term of the payback. The third ordinance is the ordinance to approve the proposed lease agreement that has been approved by the Delaware County Commissioners, and so that is the ordinance to determine whether the council will go forward with this project. And my recommendation, as it was last month, is to consider that ordinance first, and if it is approved, then you would move on to the determination of the funding mechanism.
So the first document we're going to look at is an ordinance of the Delaware County Council concerning a determination to enter into a proposed bill-operating transfer lease agreement, ordinance number 2019-006. Do I hear a motion? Samantha.
Second.
By Larry, second by Jessica. Before we proceed on, what I would like to do is allow the council members to make their Any questions they might have of Mr. Hughes, or Mr. Brooks is here also, the attorney for the commissioners. And once the council has decided you're finished, I'm going to open comments up from the audience. I ask the audience not to be redundant. I would ask the audience to address the council, not individual members. I would ask the individual making their comments to try to be quick as you can, and I'm going to watch my clock, and I'm going to limit you to two minutes, once we get to that point. So first, any council members that would like to speak about this ordinance, it's up to you. Floor's open. Anybody? Okay, anybody from the audience that would like to have two minutes to speak? Yes, sir. Come forward to the microphone. You need to state your name and address, and I think Denise has a paper up there for you to sign your name, so she can get in the minutes correctly.
Thank you. My name is Russ Fergan. I'm on, I live at 12661 West State Road 32 in Yorktown. And my comments, I sent you all an email that covered this in brief. And that is the, seems to me, the problem with the jail situation is that we have more of a problem with housing and housing problems that have drug-related problems. And that these are low-level offenders. They don't need to be in the jail with serious offenders. And so I think by agreeing to have an alternate place for these people to be treated and counseled would save the county a lot of money and would address a major problem that seems to be getting worse in, not only in our state, but in our country. This could be done several ways. One way would be to cooperate with the city of Muncie and find areas in the city where housing needs to be demolished and such a facility be built. Another possibility is that Madison County is looking to cooperate to rehab a building that's near the border with Delaware County that would serve this same purpose for 27 million as opposed to 49 million dollars. And so I think these are ways, reasons that we should consider, you should consider, not funding the present situation, so that more alternatives can be considered and given serious consideration, not only financially, but for the benefit of citizens of Delaware County that are being affected by this plague that's upon us. So thank you so much for listening to what I had to say, and I hope you'll give it some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Stayed pretty close to the time limit, too. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
You have one already over here.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't see. Wait a minute, I got one over here, I'm sorry.
Good morning, I'm Linda Hanson, 1400 West North Street, spokesperson for the League of Women Voters of Muncie, Delaware County. You're considering two alternatives for funding a new jail for Delaware County, but neither equation takes into account the repeated public concerns. The projects moved forward with little apparent response to the concerns expressed publicly by many over the past ten months. And you probably know, you must be aware, that at least two public forums were finally organized in frustration, one evening of December 4th and one at noon this past Saturday, times when working people could attend. So our request is based on longstanding league positions on representative government. The league promotes an open governmental system that is representative, accountable, and responsive, and we appreciate your taking comments. The commission's jail fact sheet produced after the fact is inadequate to address three major concerns that have been raised about the proposed jail. First, the impact on downtown. Second, the likely reduction in inmates by the time the proposed jail would be occupied. And third, adequate substance abuse treatment and rehabilitation services. Therefore, we urge you, as responsible government entity, to delay action on funding the lease until these three concerns can be addressed. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service.
Yes, I'm Terry Hoskins, and I live at 1604 North Granville Avenue here in Muncie. And I own the home, I've been a taxpayer for growing on twenty years. I just have three points, and I'll make them brief, because to keep within the time limit. First of all, I don't understand why there's not more concern, like previous speaker mentioned, about the downtown economy. After years of so many people working to make it a wonderful thing, it's almost like this plan is designed to see if they can destroy it. And my second is, no one seems to be thinking about Muncie citizens that access the courts that maybe have financial challenges or transportation challenges. All they want to do is maybe keep custody of their child, but maybe they can't get there. They don't have a convenient brand-new car to go. And that really bothers me, that there seems to be, no one considers that. And lastly, just the whole bedrock of democracy, that there seems to be no consideration for what Muncie citizens want. I've talked to hundreds of people. I have yet to meet one person who supports it, except for people who, one way or another, benefit financially or keeping their job or whatever. And it's really concerning that the citizens of Muncie are being left out totally on this decision. But I thank you very much for being able to discuss these issues. Thank you.
I got one over here, sorry.
Hi, Josh Hollowell, 219 North Pershing Drive. I as well sent an email to all of you last night with some of my comments, but just want to ask a few questions related to this project. I think one of my main concerns is, in an earlier meeting, I think it was discussed that, pretty quickly, the council decided, we don't want to raise new taxes to complete this project. But I think, actually, I wish you would have moved in that direction, because I think it would have been transparent to our community what we were doing. Because we are essentially raising new taxes, not in the sense of that a new tax is going to be levied. However, the Economic Development Income Tax Fund, I believe it's 70% to 75% of it will be spent on this project for the next 20 years. Is that correct? I don't know if you can respond, maybe you can respond afterwards, but a large portion of this is going to be...
That's the commissioners.
Right, right.
They have a clause, we don't...
Right. But, but you approve the budget over that. And I am concerned that the cost of this is being hidden, but it will be felt, in infrastructure that goes undeveloped, in economic development plans that cannot be executed, and even in ideas that maybe my children come up with, because we'll still be paying for this when my children are adults. So I'm really concerned about that, that we're not utilizing those funds correctly. And that economic development actually would reduce our inmate population. My other concern is the reality of what's going to happen over the next two years if this project is approved. We've heard that the situation in the jail currently is sort of in crisis mode, and I agree with that, and I think, is there a plan to address this? Because this is going to take some time to construct. And so is there actually any plan to address the immediate need that exists today, or are we making a long-term decision to solve an immediate problem? So those are my concerns, I think that those need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hughes, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do not have veto power on the edit fund. We, to put it in common terms, we rubber-stamp their plan as a council. By statute, we actually don't cut things out of their plan, we just...
We do not have input into the plan.
Right, okay.
It is your group.
Just for your information.
Correct.
Okay, sir.
Jason DiNetti, I live at 228 North Vine Street in downtown Muncie. First of all, I want to say thank you for allowing us, the public, to speak before a vote is made. That is certainly appreciated, because there's been some frustration, it's already been noted, about the ability to be able to speak about this particular plan in non-working hours, but also just being able to convey our concerns to council members. I just want to bring up a few things that haven't been brought up yet. One, it's my understanding that the commissioners, when they did an RFP, they received one bid for this project. They accepted that bid. No comparables. So that's a concern to me right there that should be noted. The other concern is, is that the current justice center is 27 years old, as far as I know, and we spent, what the Star Press said in an article, sixty-three million dollars to pay for that. As elected officials, I haven't heard a legitimate plan for that building. So what is the plan for that building when you're going to vacate everything now? I certainly think that retrofitting a school into a new justice center is not a good expenditure for our community. I think that there are much better ways to spend that money to address the issue of overcrowding. This is a two-year construction build-out. What are we going to do to address the overcrowding during that two-year period that has been labeled a crisis right now in the jail? I acknowledge that there's overcrowding, and that it's unsafe for inmates and employees, and I think that needs to be addressed immediately. There's also three things that I want to bring up that are happening at the state level. There is currently a Senate Bill 33 that is passed, the Senate, and moved to the House that would help establish funding for comprehensive rehabilitation and addiction recovery centers throughout the state of Indiana, and there's been money attached to that. And that's something that we could build on to help address some of the issues that we're dealing with, that are an alternative to more incarceration. There's also a bill recently that passed the House that is setting up to address overcrowding in local jails, because that's an ongoing concern, not just in our county but elsewhere, that would help move some of those low-level offenders to a location until trial is going to happen. So that's something we need to pay attention to. Then there's also Criminal Rule 26, which, if some of you don't know, I've been doing some research on it, starting January 2020, they will no longer allow bail, people to be held pretrial for bail unless the state can prove that they're an absolute flight risk or a risk to public. This will significantly decrease the populations in our local jails. So just think about that when you're thinking about spending 70-plus, however much that is, for the future of our economic development for the next 20 to 25 years. Also, the First Step Act that President Trump and bipartisan support at the federal level is also going to help to start to decrease our prison populations and our incarceration rates as well. So I just want to encourage you to think about that as you think about doing the largest expenditure that the county has ever done for more incarceration. Thank you.
Amen. I will follow up on your remarks. The courts have requested, and we have approved, an extra probation officer for pretrial, probation, I guess you would call, release without bond. And as of last Thursday, when I talked with the sheriff, their screening program has screened and released everyone that's eligible for that release, according to the judge's criteria. So we're already into that project. The commissioners have contracted with Community Corrections. The whole house arrest situation is no longer, the commissioners actually pay Community Corrections to monitor these people that are out on their own recognizance. So we are doing some of the things that you've already commented on.
My name's Tyler Bergout. I live out in Yorktown, U509, West Oak Brook Court. I've had an opportunity, excuse me, to speak with some of the council members, and I wanted to follow up on what Mr. DiNati spoke about. Criminal Rule 26, I just want the council to be aware of that rule before a decision's made. I think the council has had some input on the rule so far. While some people don't fall within the ambit of the rule, the exact parameters of the rule, I think the spirit of the rule still exists. It was passed by our Supreme Court with some nudging by the Indiana General Assembly. And I think the rule itself, when our five Supreme Court justices passed that rule to make it effective for January 1, 2020, I don't think that the intent of those Supreme Court justices was to increase jail population. I think at a minimum, it was to keep it at where it's at or lower it. I also think that if you look at the bonding system as it exists, it disproportionately affects those that are indigent clients. I'm a local public defender, so I come at this with a different perspective. I used to be a police officer before I was a public defender, so one time I arrested people and put them in jail, and now I try and get them out of jail, and I look at it very, very differently on the back end. So I just really want the council to be aware of that rule. We have data available, the jail log, every day, we can look and see who is eligible before we make this final decision on such a big expenditure of funds for this county. I'd also like to talk about, everybody talks about the low-level offenders. For me, I'm also an engineer, so I look at data. If you look at the data that's been reported from the Indiana Supreme Court, you have felonies that range from murder, level one through level six, level six being the lowest level felony, and then misdemeanors A through C. In this county, in 2017, level six, so the lowest level felony, and including the misdemeanors, made up 91.3% of all criminal filings. In 2018, that number was 90.6%. What this county sees is low-level offenders that need rehabilitation and not incarceration. That's why I'm here, to talk about that. All right, I just have one more issue. The three major things that I see as a public defender that affect this are poverty, mental health, and addiction. If you lock people up with those problems, they come out with those problems. We have to address those problems, and a jail and incarceration incapacitation just does not solve those problems. I appreciate your time.
Amen.
I just want to speak real quickly. Previous speaker mentioned...
Your name?
Oh, sorry.
It's signed in.
Yes, it's signed. My name's Nate Rose, and I live at 1930 South Yoman Avenue here in Muncie, my zip code's 47302.
Thank you, Nate.
The previous speaker spoke about the public meeting that was held this past Saturday. As somebody who helped organize that... As somebody who helped organize that meeting, I want to clear up a common misconception that that meeting was not a protest. Everybody was invited. We invited anybody who wanted to speak in favor of this jail to come do so. Now, it just so happened that everybody who showed up was against it. I personally counted the votes. We had 32 no votes. We had zero yes votes. And judging by what we've seen so far, I suspect we'll see the same thing today. So the only thing I really want to note here is, again, to repeat that call, that if you are in favor of this jail and you don't directly benefit from it, please speak up. Let the council hear what you have to say because we haven't found anybody in favor of it so far. It doesn't meet that criteria.
Good morning. I've signed in on the other sheet. My name is Leslie McCrory. I live at 124 East 9th Street. I'm here this morning to just remind us of where we've been and would invite anyone who is in the audience to please stand. Actually, not the audience, anyone who is here to participate in this meeting, to please stand. If you have read and researched to educate yourself on this issue, if you've attended public meetings of public officials, if you've spoken at public meetings, I should see people standing, if you've met with commissioners, if you've written public officials, if you've called public officials, if you've organized a public meeting, if you've organized or signed a petition, if you've attended a citizen-organized public forum, if you've written a newspaper article to voice your opposition to this matter. These actions have been done on our own time because we believe it is important. This is not our job, but we are in this with you. We need you to vote no today to allow us to put the energy that we've already been expending on this important matter towards finding a better solution. You have heard opposition based on moral and spiritual argument, the argument from financial misappropriation of edit funds, the marginalization of the public voice, the inadequacy of this decision-making process, the lack of access at the new facility, the negative economic impact on downtown and the Wilson neighborhood. You've heard us say that the plan is based on faulty figures and projections, that it doesn't take into account legislation that will impact this, that will impact our jail population, that it's a permanent solution to a problem that's already being addressed, and that it can be addressed and solved at a lower cost by finding other measures. I realize today that it's going to take a lot of courage to vote in opposition to some of your coworkers. There was a petition that was signed by many county employees in support of this proposition. But there was also a petition organized that voiced opposition to it, and as has been stated, that is by the majority of people who live here. We ask and pray today that you will stand together with the economic experts, faith leaders, the League of Women Voters, those who are or directly work with the poor, experts in mental health and drug addiction, neighborhood leaders, accessibility advocates, and all manner of concerned citizens. We do not believe it is your job to rubber stamp whatever is set before you. We believe it is your job to spend our tax money how we would like for it to be spent. We ask you today to stand with us so that we may work with you. Thank you.
Good man. Thank you. Good morning. Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. I just want to take a moment to address a few misconceptions that I've heard. First of all, with jail overcrowding, we are in a crisis situation up there. Last week, there were a few days where we were over 340 inmates in-house. That's what there's many shipped out to other counties as we could find and we could place other places. We don't house any low-level inmates in our jail because we can't. We aren't housing anybody who are there on misdemeanors because they can't afford bail. People who come in on misdemeanors are basically booked and released unless it's a domestic battery, a gun charge, or an invasion of privacy. If we can release people from jail, believe me, we are doing every single thing that we can to address jail overcrowding. The other thing is the criminal rule that Mr. DiNati spoke about. We know that it's going to be law next year, next January. So our courts, Community Corrections, our jail, the sheriff's office, we have collaborated and began instituting what that law is going to say already this year. We are already screening every inmate that's available to see if they can be released based on the criteria for that criminal rule that's going to be in effect next year. It's not going to release a substantial amount of inmates. It's just not. There was one day last week where they screened 13 or 14 people who met the criteria to be screened. Zero of those people got released based on that. So the judges now, the circuit court judges in Community Corrections are trying to tweak that criteria to make it so more people meet that standard and can be released. But just so you know, we are holding zero, what you would call, low-level offenders. All right? Zero. We are doing everything we can to address this problem. I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I would like to point out also that a document came into my hands in the last few days, late last week. That's a report dated September 14, 28, from the Indiana Department of Corrections. It's got a big red stamp on it that says it's confidential, so I can't divulge the report. I've had these reports before. I kind of divulged some information from one of them, got a little trouble, so I've been turning them over to Mr. Hughes. This report commends the former sheriff. There's not a no in here except for overcrowding and life events. Everything else, all help, people needed, food, the whole nine yards. They're running the jail the best they can with what they've got to work with. And I'll tell you that, I hope I didn't break confidentiality out there.
My name is Javon Thompson. I serve as the Executive Director of the Montse Human Rights Commission. And just listening to what has been stated today, it sounds like there is part of the public that wants to work with you. And we want to work with you to be able to help alleviate this overcrowding. And it sounds like there's an opportunity here for community leaders, for people, churches, to work with this council, to be able to alleviate this overcrowding. It doesn't sound like the overcrowding is going to last as long as there are steps in place to make sure that people are helped, I'll put it that way. But we would ask, as people that live in Delaware County, that want to see Delaware County prosper, the effect and the impact will be on people that are poor, people that don't have adequate transportation, if they have transportation at all. And we must be open-minded and an open heart to be able to help where we can. And that's what I would ask. And I would hope to see that there would be some type of council or panel put together to see how we can get these drug addiction courts together or do something other than the jail at this time. It's not saying that the jail is not needed, but if we have some programs, and we do have programs, let's work together and try to alleviate this overcrowding situation in the jail. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd stand aside. I'd like to move on now. Don't worry.
No new jails.
No new jails.
No new jails.
No new jails.
Now, I ask you, we're not here to have a demonstration. We're here to vote on a very serious matter.
This is a serious matter.
I said that. You don't have to repeat me. It is a serious matter. I've let a lot of people talk. There was nothing on this agenda today that said that I was compelled to let anybody speak, period.
Thank you.
I'm trying to run the meeting the best I can. If everybody wants to sit here till noon, we can sit here and listen to the same thing over and over because the arguments are all the same. We all understand the arguments. I've got a folder right here. That's what I did study about this project. There's no one on this council who's not cognizant of what this problem is. And I thank you for your patience. And if I hear anything else from the council, I'm going to call for roll. Roll call.
I disagree.
No new jails.
No new jails.
No more jails.
No more jails.
No more jails.
We don't need this.
The people of Montse spoke...
No more jails.
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 Go ahead, Scott.
Well, I think you guys can see why we've been hesitant to give public input, and I'm glad that Ron opened up public input today. I think it was just nice of you guys to have a place to speak. This jail project that we're looking at right now is significantly different from what we looked at back in the feasibility study. In my opinion, and again, I've done a lot of research on this, the cost of the project is prohibitive. It's unrealistic to think that this project, once it's completed, isn't going to cost more than what we currently pay. And I think that what we need to do is take the time and get this right. I think there needs to be more work. I think that we can provide... We can provide a better product for the taxpayers when it's all done. I do think this is the direction, this is the right direction. You know, there's a lot of information that's been considered for a long, long time by everybody, and everybody has to make their own decision up here, but I've got reservations about moving forward with this project the way it sits right now.
One other point I'd like to make. I've been involved in county government since 1981. I had a little sabbatical in there when I was not involved, about eight years. But during that period of time, we're talking about, what, 38 years? Comprehensive mental health for next year out of the commissioner's budget is $625,631. Now, you take that times 38. That's a big number. It's been spent out of property tax money mandated by state legislature. Now, with that kind of money, why do we have this problem? Why haven't those folks done their job? That's one of my pet peeves. Because the state legislature, the local taxpayer, has supported an organization in this town that's supposed to be taking care of these problems that aren't sheriff's problems. Sheriffs are social workers. They're protectors. And I just thought I'd point that out. Okay, anybody else? Roll call.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
No.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
No.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Quayconbush.
No.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2019004, second reading. It's a motion to fund the project without property tax backup. At this point, again, my suggestion with council is a member of the council could offer a motion to approve either 004 or 005. Again, 004 does not include the property tax backup, and 005 does include the property tax backup. I think the council received a pretty detailed explanation of the impact of that on the funding mechanism at the January meeting, although I believe Mr. Crook was here and he would be available perhaps to reiterate anything the council needed. But at this point, it would be appropriate to have a motion to approve one or the other of these two ordinances.
I'll move for approval of ordinance 2019-004.
Everybody, Larry?
Right now.
Second. And that is the ordinance without the property tax backup. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, I think just from the discussions that we've had throughout this whole process on the funding source, I think everybody's been in agreement on that, that we did not, we wanted to do this without property tax backup, and our preference was to do it without property tax backup with the bond. And I think the commissioners have delivered on that part of it, so I would be supportive of 004.
And in round numbers, this is about a $2 million less cost because it's an 18-year payback instead of the one with property tax backup is a 20-year payback. So actually, the annual payments will be higher, obviously, just like your mortgage. If you don't pay it off earlier, you don't pay as much interest. So it is a savings of a couple million dollars through this round. Is that 18 or 40? 18. The other one's 20 and one's 18, I think. Okay. Anyone else? Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
I know.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quayconbush.
You know, I agree with this over the other one, but I'm going to be consistent in my vote. I will vote no. I would like to thank the audience, everyone that's participated today. I know how emotional this is. I went through this once before in the 80s when we built the current jail, had the project taken away from us and given to the master commissioner by a federal judge. I sat on the stand in federal court in Indianapolis for seven hours and answered questions of the federal judge one time. And it is very emotional, it's very difficult, but the people sitting here at the council level have voted the way they feel like they should. I'll just have to commend them for doing their job. Thank you all for your attendance and your patience. I guess that's my comment. That's the end of the agenda in what I have.
You wanted me to report on how the trial was going?
Excuse me, Emily.
I forgot about you.
I'm sorry. I didn't forget your name, though. I didn't pick your name. Other new business. Yes, yes, yes. Sorry. Oh, yeah. Thank you very much. This is the report she prepared about the screening.
This is the assessment that we're doing since January. So as you can see, pre-trial probation officers put this report together for you. There is at least one of the pre-trial probation officers up in the jail every single day assessing bookends. As you can see, we had 689 total bookends. Out of the 689, 488 were not even eligible to be assessed because... pre-trial probation officers up in the jail every single day assessing, uh, bookends. As you can see, we had 689 total bookends. Out of the 689, 488 were not even eligible to be assessed because of the criteria. Um, they've done 171 assessments, and out of those, only eight were approved for pre-trial release. 72 referred to DCCC for further evaluation, which would be, um, house arrest and things like that. And then the rest were sent to the judge to determine how they wanted to proceed on it. The reasons for non-eligibility for assessment are listed, and this is state-regulated. They're assessed with murder or treason, jailed on a warrant, there's no new charges, arrest is already, arrestee is already on pre-trial supervision for another unrelated incident, on probation in Delaware County already, if they're on parole, already on community supervision with DCCC, refused to cooperate with the assessment, not able to participate at direction of jail staff, or out-of-county hold, or bonded. So this criminal rule 26 that Eric keeps talking about, that we, we took upon ourselves last year, we started talking to you about that because we knew this was coming down the pike. We wanted to get things in place so that we could start tweaking the system and making sure that we did the most efficient thing that we could do as a court. Um, we have tweaked a couple of things as we've gone. We've gone in it two months, about two months, and we have tweaked a couple of things. But it's running pretty efficiently. And as you can see, the numbers are not what any of us expected. So I don't know what the answer is. Um, I know that out of the two pre-trial probation officers, one is at about 100, and the other one's at 40. But it's because nobody's qualifying. So it's not like they're not putting them on and we can. It's just nobody's getting put on because they're not qualifying for it at this point. Do you have any other questions?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
When Emily says "we," she means five judges.
Judges.
That's who she's including. She's their administrator, and she, she communicates between the judges and the council constantly and very efficiently.
And the judges are working adamantly trying to get the jail population down. But when we don't have, um, as you can see, we just don't have the means to do it.
Well, they're just bad actors. That's how long they can't get out.
I want to make sure I gave you those statistics. I know you asked for them last month. And we really don't really know how this is going to play out until we cycle through all five judges. I mean, every judge does things differently. Everybody has their own opinion. Um, but once we cycle through five judges, we're definitely going to go back in. We'll have a meeting about it and talk about what else we can do. How can we make it better? Um, if anybody had any better ideas. I mean, what can we do to make it more efficient? But, um, I think, you know, we're just so early into, but I'm glad we started and we did. And we appreciate that you guys gave us that extra person because one pre-trial probation officer could not do this.
Well, the other thing you tried was that cell phone program, too.
Well, we're doing that. We're still doing that. So they get text reminders. The courts collect cell phones at every hearing. And, uh, we actually did a pilot program where we paid for it. And then our court software program came out with a free version. And so we get text reminders sent out to all defendants for their hearing. So it does help with, uh, cut down on failure to appear. And we actually have people coming to court like, "Oh, I'm so glad I got that text. I totally forgot about courts." So it is working, that part of it. So again, the judges are always trying to find ways to help.
Anyone have a question, Emily?
Well, I'm, I'm glad Sheriff Skinner got up and talked earlier. I've been watching the numbers, um, every day. And I know what the difference was from, you know, seven, eight years ago when I first looked through the jail and, and the difference between 200 and 300, and now 350 or 340 in there. And it's a big, it's a big difference. It's a lot to manage, uh, over there. So I, I appreciate what you guys are, are doing over there for sure.
Well, Scott's getting a few years under his belt as our representative in Community Corrections. And he's, he's more cognizant of the day-to-day process than the rest of us are because of his volunteering to do that.
Yeah, it's amazing what we are doing because we're doing a lot. Um, and it's still, you know, it's, the numbers are still what they are in there for, you know, whatever reasons that they're that way. But it's, uh, it's a tough jail over there with that many people.
Anyone else? Mary? She still with us?
Yes, we do.
I used to sit down there where Mary is. It's kind of nice in there.
I won't let that happen.
Just wondering, no way, no she's here. Okay. Um, with that, the meeting is adjourned. All those say aye.
Wait a minute.
I just wondered if I know today is Denise's 60th birthday.
I forgot.
Oh!
I forgot.
We sure have a birthday.
I'm sorry. I had that on my...
I can't let her reply with that one.
Donna, Donna.
Today's your birthday?
Yes.
So let's...
60th birthday.
Happy birthday, dear Leah. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Denise. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Now, Denise, are you the older sister or the younger sister?
Oh!
Go there.
Thank you guys very much. And I'll be...
Happy birthday.
... you one day.
Kate in the auditor's office?
No.
No.
We're going to, we're celebrating in a different way.
Okay. Good job. That means Mr. Craig Grant won't be down to see his son. Steve's dad comes to see him every time they're putting it down. He smells it all the way. Okay, now then. Anybody else?
Donna, Donna.
I bet.
I told Brown Hill we need to drop.
I run the damn mess. Penelope nervous. It is a motion. It is a motion. Let's face it. Okay. All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye. Motion.